All right, 6 o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Bills and manifests are rolling around somewhere. We have no need for an initial non-public session, so we'll start with opening public comment. Anybody?
The snacks, I guess.
You can talk about snacks if you want.
Refreshments, yeah?
It's like Cooper Hill.
Would any board member want to take this opportunity to address the board?
I would. Several things. First off, I wanted to talk about your letters to the editor and that you're signing them to the Northwood School Board. Now, I certainly do not care if you put a letter in every week, but you don't represent, the letters don't represent the Northwood School Board. I listened for five years to Dave Ruth ask me over and over to say that I'm not representing the school board, and my letters do not. They represent me. And you don't have our permission to sign your name and then Northwood School Board, and I find it offensive. And if you do it again, I'm gonna go talk to the Secretary of State and see if you can do that, because I don't think you can. It's like the Facebook thing, that's not sanctioned, that has nothing to do with the Northwood School Board, it has to do with you. And that's fine, I don't mind that, but you don't have permission from the Northwood School Board to have a Facebook page and to put the stuff you donate. I haven't looked at it since you took off the one thing that I put on it months ago, so I haven't looked at it since. In addition, I really did like your letter, the Grinch letter, I thought that was kind of neat. You seem to have a lot of time. Probably I got more reaction from that letter than any other letter in the past, so I wanted to read a couple of them. This one is from one of our state representatives. "Hope you're doing well," hi Tim, "hope you're doing well, just wanted to take a minute to say that I appreciate the work you do for the town of Northwood and all of the work you have done on the school board. I found Keith's letter in the Sun very immature and disrespectful. You should know that you're doing a good job when people have to resort to personal texts. Thank you for continuing to work for us on the school board, I look forward to seeing you soon, I hope you and your family have a great Christmas." Again, that was from one of our state representatives here in town. Second one is, "I wanted to say I'm appalled at the LTE letter, letter to the editor, in today's paper. It was unprofessional, childish, and just plain disgusting. I for one feel he should step down as he is not representative of our community. Thank you, Tim, for all of the hard work and effort to keep our school honest. Without you, I can't even fathom what corruption would run rampant. Merry Christmas." So anyway, I don't mind the letters, I got a kick out of it. I do have a fault with the way you're signing the Northwood School Board. If you wanted to put, "I'm a member of the Northwood School Board," fine, whatever, but you're not the Northwood School Board. There's five of us. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to address a letter that you had in the Sun-
Feel free.
-on December 7th, where you specifically said, "I will not be supporting the contracts," which unfortunately, I feel like, was a huge slap in the face to this board and to the teachers that we negotiated with. You have been saying publicly, for how long, that a number of things that, maybe not a number of things, that what we went after in negotiations, we got this year, and that you would fully support that contract. And I do understand the fact that you do not like the budget, but you said you would support that contract, and then to get this letter-
And, Tom, and again, including to Mr. Ronin, it was based on the budget.
Tim, you're out of order. You ready to do your three minutes? She has her three minutes.
You never said that, Tim, you told-
Tim, you're out of order.
You said that you would support it. I just think that that's part of the-
I don't support it now, not with the base of the budget.
Please let her have her time to speak, please. I gave you your time.
I think it's awful that you lied, yet again.
All set?
Yes.
Don't wait into the spray?
I'm all set.
Okay. I have nothing to say, other than, Tim, read the policies, as far as what your opinions were when you said. Seeing no more public comment, we're gonna close that session and move on to school board business. First off, I want to ask the board, since we have some people here from the, which committee are you guys, the Economic Development Committee?
Economic Development Committee. You referred to me.
Yes, to talk over the tax increment finances, so I was wondering if it'd be okay if we'd move them up to the beginning, and then we can get on with our regular stuff so that they can move on. Everybody okay with that?
All right, I do.
Well, thank you. Had I known that, I wouldn't have brushed teeth and walked. It's worked out well.
Is the mic on?
Mic's on. Can everybody hear me? Okay, I don't know-
He really likes to hear you.
Hold on a second. I got there. Yeah? Now, I'm overdoing it, huh? Okay, so, I'm not sure- I see a couple familiar faces like Rebecca's in the audience here, so for some of you, this will be a repeat. I just want to briefly describe what we're trying to do, and I'm here in part because there's a requirement. When we do a TIF, we need to tell the school board what we're doing, but I'd also like, if I could, to take a couple minutes and explain what the TIF is and why.
That'd be great.
Really, we're doing this because I think there's an opportunity for us to do something where we can broaden our tax base and basically help the town support not just the school, but also the municipal services that we would like. And I think that opportunity is the TIF. Don't know that, you know, we can pull this off, but if we can, I think there's an opportunity to have several million dollars, if not maybe 10 or 20 million dollars' worth of additional tax base for the town. Now, the way the TIF works is, you have an existing tax base in the TIF district, and as you do improvements and attract more businesses, the captured assessed value, that increment, goes up. Not the base, but the increment goes up. That increment can then be used to fund things that would help us attract even more businesses. So, for example, let's say we can attract a warehouse in here, we get them to build the road, and then, as an incentive to getting them come here, we can use that incremental tax to help buy back the road.
Hal, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
So, when that increment, does that come from the assessment, like, does the assessed value that goes to the town and school general funds, the assessment stays the same? So, if the tax rate goes up, the amount of taxes will increase still, but the assessment will be the, will be-
Yeah, and that's what you need, that's exactly the way you need to look at it. So, if we can attract some folks in, then the only amount we get is the amount above that. So, it's not really taking away any money per se, because we don't have it anyway. I'll be blunt, you know, there's, there's like a hundred-plus acres that we're getting a grand total of, I think I calculated it out the other night, $57' worth of taxes on, so we wouldn't even have to really attract somebody that does more than five acres' worth of, you know, and we'd be ahead of the game. Now, the thing that you have to remember also is, is that, once we do this and the projects are done, then all that extra increment that we've been using to help, say, build the roads and do things like that, all that increment then comes to us. And so, if we're patient, I think we can, you know, in the end, maybe not in, you know, well, maybe in my lifetime, but, you know, certainly in 20 years or so, I think we might have something pretty nice. The key is gonna be to kickstart this. We did have several meetings and hearings, and we got feedback, which I think was pretty good, but one of them was, we don't want to put the town at risk financially, which means we are gonna have to look for businesses that are willing to work with us on this, meaning that, for example, that warehouse might have to maybe put in the construction road, and then yearly, we pay them to help build the road up to standards. So, you might have to, you know, you might have to work to find somebody like that. But if we can, then I think, once you see it, you'll start seeing it sort of snowball. There's been some very successful ones out in Keene, we were just over in Durham today, they're doing well, and I was down in Pennsylvania, where I have relatives, this holiday. In Allentown, Pennsylvania, they have a huge one, billions of dollars that they're talking about, and within six years, they not only recovered all their money, and now that money's coming back to the town, they got five more projects of almost equal size. So, it can be very successful. Couple of points, though. This does not change anything regarding our zoning, or the way we handle approval of things. Any project that comes in still has to go through the planning board, still has to meet all our town regulations. This is not a bypass for any of that. It's really more, how do we help somebody come into town? So, that's an important part. Question?
Yeah, is there a set time limit on how long it'll be, that the money will be allocated to improvements in that area?
Well, it's in the development plan, and it's specified as 15 years, or however long it takes to finish off a given project. So, for example, to that point, and it's whichever is longer. So, for example, if towards the end, we get five companies that come in, and let's say it's year 14, and we're gonna help them with the road to loop it up to where they are, well, that might mean that it might take five years to pay that off with the increment, so then that would extend to year 19 for that, just that part, but everything else would be done by then.
And who approves that?
Well, we have to approve the finance and development plan, and then, well, there's three parts to it, and it's all on the warrant, and it's an up or down vote, because you need three things. You need to define the district, which is on the map, you can see it on there. You need to approve the formation of an advisory board, and then you need to approve the development and finance plan. Now, as I said, ours is a little bit, well, let's just say, it's different than some others, where like in Keene, they went out, or, well, in some places, they went out on a limb and put some stuff in first. We're looking to have relatively, well, we want some leeway. So, we said, we're looking at, for example, three potential entrances to this area. Don't know if we'll need all three, but we put in there that we would like to do that if we can. Now, it might turn out that depending on who we attract, let's say we attract Liberty Mutual, you know, they put a campus in here, well, maybe they just want a main entrance named after somebody in town here, you know, in the middle. But we put in there that this is, you know, potentially where we could spend the money, but it's gonna be the advisory board that actually then recommends it to the selectmen, who would then say, yes, have the administrator administrate this project. So, we might not even know, at this point, you know, when we say, put a central access in, whether it's gonna be here, here, or here, or even, you know, what we have to do in terms of getting in there. It might be only a couple hundred feet till we just get through the first frontage of property, or it might be that we have to go in 500 feet, so we put the maximum in. Now, we don't have to spend that all, but we need to tell the town that we could, so that's why we have those projects.
So, each of these projects will be approved by the selectmen at each point, or the voters?
Well, when you approve the plan as it is, which you're essentially approving it-
So, you're giving it up to-
-but, it has to be administered, the advisory board has to recommend it, and then the selectmen have to actually process it and do it. So, yeah, if we have conflict, I mean, like, the selectmen, the selectmen ask, well, you know, there's some stuff in here about recreation, you know, do we really know we'll have trails? Well, I don't know. I really don't. But we're talking about 300 acres, where if my vision holds, we would develop about 150 of that, and the rest would stay natural. Well, 150 acres of, you know, natural area is a pretty good area for hiking just in itself, but if we can also get some approval, like people do right now, to let people snowmobile and stuff, well, then that's even so much the better. But if we don't have the basis for doing that, then the selectmen won't tell Joe to administer it, you know, we just won't, we'll move it forward. So, to answer your question bluntly, the town is voting on whether or not they would agree to do these types of projects.
They're voting on this and the plan, they're voting on these two things.
Yes, and the formation of the advisory board, and we thought about doing it with three different warrants, and we just said, no. Either we want to do this, or we don't. So, all three components are in one warrant, so it's an either up or down vote, as to whether we want to do it. We, you know, to, I mean, let me say this, I think by having the TIF district defined, maybe that will help us a little bit in terms of, now we have a defined area where somebody comes in in town and says, hey, you know, I'm interested in doing some light commercial, you know, building or something like that. Well, here's the area where we'd like to see it. Yeah, so that helps a little bit, but, you know, let's face it, most developments on roads like Route 4, they buy a plot that includes the front acreage. Then they sell off that front acreage to get the money to put the road into the rest of the park. So, that's what we're really trying to facilitate.
Can I just go back? I'm sorry, so, the vote is gonna be on the district, the plan, and you said on the-
Advisory, the ability to form the advisory board-
To form, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Which is laid out in the development and finance plans. So, it'll be five people, and by state statute, three of them must be landowners.
Okay.
So, three of them, and then, as you might expect, this is a fairly, you know, planning intensive type thing, so we said, the selectmen's representative to the planning board should also be a member, and then you need a member at large. So, maybe somebody like myself that's on the Economic Development Committee. But the advisory board, for example, would be the board that says, yeah, look, we're talking to the landowners, we're talking with somebody that might be interested, let's see where, you know, what will work, and therefore what we would recommend as the exact specifics relative to, say, a road in the middle, or a road on the east, or west side. And it'd be their responsibility to recommend that.
Why did you pick that area? Not you, I mean, why is that particular area being picked, Hal?
No, you actually said it correctly.
All right, why did you pick that area, Hal?
For a couple of, for a couple, no, actually, I don't, a couple reasons. One is, we looked at several areas in town where there was a large enough tract where we thought we could attract some interest, and we looked at some stuff on the, I get my directions mixed up, on the east side of town, but we didn't think there was sufficient acreage there. We looked at, you know, maybe including what's in that big open field next to Johnson's, and we said, well, that might be able to develop on its own, don't really, you know, I'm hoping it doesn't get developed, because I like the view, but I don't know that they would really need the incentive, because they've got the road access right there, and the frontage where they could sell. And then we sort of started looking where the main boundaries are, and we just said, you know, this area here's got a lot of stuff that's in current use that we just haven't been able to unlock the value on. I moved up here 10 years ago, and I haven't seen really anything happening with that, and people tell me nothing really was going on for previous 10, 20, 20 years.
Could you explain to me exactly where this is? So, I'm assuming Route 4 is along the bottom?
Yeah, it's a little hard to see.
And here-
We don't have color printers, so, yes, if you look, it's a little hard to see, but it's a lighter, lighter brown or gray line. So, it's not, the lower end or the south end is Route 4.
Yep.
And then, you know, basically follow Canterbury Road, which is that road that goes off on a diagonal here.
I'm just trying to think of where, I'm not real good with roads, so I know where-
Oh, do you know where Main Street is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that's why I was trying to figure out where Main Street was on here.
Main Street is that, is this intersection right here?
Okay, that is, okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure of, okay.
And Canterbury Road is the dirt road that goes just past Parker French West.
Probably never noticed.
What's that?
Which you probably never noticed.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. And the town owns property, owns 21669 and 21615.
21669.
Yeah, so we included their properties, so they're in this corner here, Barbie.
Oh, there they are, okay. 21669 and 21670, you said?
216, and 21615, 15.
15.
15. And, I mean, just as an example of things that have changed, when we originally looked at this, we had, we had basically put the boundary right here, going up this way, but we sent out notices to all the people abutting, and actually then 21670 said, well, we want in, you know, you know, so, okay, fine, the more the merrier. And then, the, so, that property there, the, it's, I'm gonna be real careful here, it's the Johnson Trust, but it's Nancy Graham Lynch trustee, not Peter Johnson trustee. Peter's property's over here. This is, so this is a different trust. So, it sort of bends around there and then goes up to the easement for the power company. And then, the east side is defined by pretty much Dave Daco's property. You can sort of see, the lighter colored area here is where he excavated there and blasted and stuff.
Okay.
So, Hal, what is the general zoning of this land currently?
We have no zoning in Northwood.
So, it could be anything?
And there would not be any zoning here, but, you know, when you talk to, when you talk to somebody, we'd say, yeah, we don't have any zoning, but we got a great location for you.
Right.
And because, I mean-
I was just wondering, like, could a development spring up here of houses too, or is this just for, you know, business?
It's possible, but the way the TIF is written is, we would favor, oh, let's see, projects that increase our net tax base.
That don't tax-
Now, we just got back from Durham, where there was some discussion about that, but as an example, I think we even say it in there, I'd have to double check, but we say we're favoring, like, light industrial, commercial, so, you know, warehouses, or like the machine shop that's down here, people like that, people maybe want places to park their rigs so they can do repair on them, or consolidate. There's some folks that are saying, you know, gee, this would be a good location if I had a business where I have to send repair folks out to different areas, because I can get out to Seacoast and go up and down 95, I can go over to 93 and go up and down-
I'm just wondering how that's enforced, because if one of these property owners decides they want to, you know, subdivide their land and sell it as house plots.
Oh, yeah, they could.
They could.
They could, but the idea would be, they haven't been able to do it so far-
Right.
So, I'm guessing without some incentive, they won't be able to do it or not do it easily, but it's a good point. I mean, a lot of the things I talk about, like, for example, being able to, you know, keep it at 50% developed and 50%, we can't force that, but we can say, well, you know, you might want an entrance, and we could, we could help you support building an entrance, but we don't like that you're building on 80% of the property, so, we're not gonna recommend that. So, they could still go ahead, but-
They'd have built private road, or-
Yeah, they put a private road in, and they wouldn't get any support for it, and, you know, okay.
Right.
I mean, yeah, you can't stop that, per se, and, you know, if somebody wants to do that, you know.
They could do it today, too.
They could do it today, yeah. That doesn't change that, but I think by having the area defined, it lets us look at it a little bit more holistically, and it gives us a little bit better chance to say to folks, you know, we're trying to do this, you know, from an overall perspective, and, yeah, yeah, maybe you could carve out, I'm talking now from a playing board perspective, we could say, yeah, maybe you're trying to carve out another two lots out of the 10 that you think you're gonna get, but if you look at this a little bit more holistically, maybe you'll only get eight lots, but it supports a bigger thing for the town, and your land will be more valuable, because then these other lots will be more valuable, and so I think you can tell a story about that. Now, does the story stick? Do people believe it? You know, I don't know, we're, you know, but I think it would be, the reason I want to do it, I think it would be a shame not to try it. We may not be successful, we may pound our heads on the wall for, you know, I don't know how many years, but if we get a few, I mean, just, if we even just get a few, the benefit to the town will be, you know, significant compared to the, like I say, the 60 bucks we're getting now from some of these properties.
So, does this give the town more of an incentive to advertise these areas, or, you know, try to get more-
Well, yeah, that's part of what we're working on. Let me just, before I lose my train of thought, Tim, the other reason why this slot was, this spot was selected, just train of consciousness, you know, in past, and I think about what people tell me about the Hanaford and stuff, there was some concern about the looks and things like that. In this particular area, if we can put just one entrance in, or, you know, some, like in this case, maybe, maybe three discreet entrances, all this stuff would be in the back where nobody can see it. And so, yes, you might have to be able to get out onto the road, but a lot of, you know, the commercial-looking buildings and things like that would be out of sight and pretty much out of mind. So, that was the other reason, when we, when we looked at this, you know, what would, what would be good from that perspective, because, you know, the upper boundaries, the north boundaries, an easement, yes, at some point, by the time you get to Daco's, then you start to get in some residential, but on the other side, there's just really a couple houses and then the road. So, it sort of shelters the, you know, what we, what we're doing by the, you know, just by the location there.
I was just thinking of the, and you and I talked about that earlier tonight, about the focus groups that we had some time ago-
Yeah.
-regarding the master plan, and my recollection of those was a lot more interest in town of the other end of town, which seems to be coming, what is Northwood.
Well, for the shops and things like that, and walking and things, yeah, I think, and I think this doesn't interfere with that vision.
You're thinking of more of light industrial and stuff like that?
I am.
Yes.
Now, that doesn't necessarily, I mean, it's sort of what Keith said, we can't force somebody to put their commercial building there, nor could we keep out somebody deciding to build a house back there.
Sure.
But you could build the roads such that-
But we could, we could encourage, and I think jawbone them, or whatever the word is, to do that. So, Barbie, I cut you off, what was the other question? Or what was the other comment?
Oh, does this encourage the town now to be more aggressive to try to get these types of businesses into this area?
Well, I don't know if it encourages the town, per se, but it certainly encourages Joe and me. We've already been out to Durham today, we're talking about going to Dred next, no, not next Friday, Friday the 20th, we're going to talk to the Commercial Real Estate Group, what is it called, Joe?
Oh.
Something B O R.
Cyber.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get a membership there, and, yeah, so it's encouraging us, and we're hoping that other folks will just, you know, get encouraged also and join us. But I think, you know, if we can say, look, we got an area where the town has voted and said, look, we're behind this in terms of an area to focus on, I think that means something to somebody coming in from the outside. Now, it doesn't guarantee them that it's just gonna fly through the planning board, no. Does it, you know, guarantee them that the, you know, the fire chief won't say, no, you still need to put a sprinkler, no, it doesn't mean any of that, but I think it helps, and I think by getting the word out, I think we have a chance. Now, that said, it's not gonna be, you know, we just do this and then all of a sudden everybody starts showing up.
Right.
Let's face it. If that was the case, we wouldn't be standing- Let's, let's face it. If, if that was the case, we wouldn't be standing here talking at this point.
So can I ask you, how, how does the process get bootstrapped? Because you need to have road to get out there.
We need to have a couple people that are willing to work with us and jumpstart it. It's really what I come up to.
Well, I meant financially, though, right? I mean, like, like, a, a business is not gonna want to move in until there's a road so it can get there.
Well.
So we're not gonna have the taxes up, up, up front to pay for that road.
So let's take that example.
Yeah.
There have been some people interested in a warehouse. They could buy the land, and we've been talking to some of the landowners and they're interested. They could buy maybe only 10 acres out of, you know, maybe 50 or 100 that's, that's potentially available. And they could build a construction road. Put their building in. Once the building's in, well, then we know what it's worth and we know what it can be.
And then the money starts coming in, too.
Yeah. And then the taxes come in on that building. Now, we can disperse that to help pay for the road improvement. But like I say, you gotta find somebody that's willing to do it in that manner.
Yep.
If you can't find somebody that's interested in doing it in that manner, we're not moving forward. That's why I say, we need one or two, maybe three, to just sort of work with us and get us started. And, you know, finding them could be like looking for a needle in the haystack. And we might not find it. But I don't think that should stop us from trying. So that's, that's the whole point. Yeah. So I realize that maybe you didn't have a chance to read this prior to. There, there is a lot of details in the, in the plan. If anybody has questions after the fact, I would certainly be happy to come back or just give me a call and I'll answer them on an individual basis. It doesn't, it doesn't really matter. We're just interested in getting the word out and getting people interested and excited about it and hopefully approve it. So we'll see.
I believe you're required to consult with us, which I think we've done.
Yes.
I don't think that we need to have any action on this. We don't vote on it or anything like that.
Um, you don't. The way we, we, you know, part of it, we have to go to see the county, too. We went to see them. What did they do? They, they did vote to say something. What did they say? I forget. But no, there's not, there's no formal approval or anything like, like that required. As long as it's in the minutes and, and it's noted and, you know, I think everybody's had enough, enough of my talking, so they know I was here. Other questions? If no questions, any concerns? Because, I mean, like at the last hearing or the previous hearing, Jim Hadley got up and said, gee, you know, I'm, I'm worried about the town being put at risk. So we changed, we changed it. If there's any comments or que, or concerns like that, I'd, I'd like to hear them. I think we still have time maybe to make an alteration to the, the plan before it goes for the vote.
Do you have a, an upcoming meeting before the vote?
We have one, we had, we had an informal hearing, hmm, weeks ago. We just had a formal hearing last night, no, Tuesday night. And really, the only person that commented was Bob Strobel, and he seemed pretty happy, especially about the way we talked about bootstrapping, the way, the way you described it. And liked, I mean, like, you know, like, we talked to the, the Conservation Commission, made sure that we weren't infringing on any core areas from them and stuff. So it done, you know, sort of, sort of all that homework, and then there's one more final formal hearing. I'm not sure when it is. Do you remember, Joe? We'll get that to you.
Just so if we read this and maybe come, at least we'll talk to you guys one last time.
Yeah. You don't have to wait for that, though. I mean, call me or email me or, or Joe, and between the two of us, we'll, we'll answer the question. But, yeah, that, well, it, it has to be posted, so it'll be in the, in, in the paper and stuff, so.
Cool.
I realize this is your meeting.
Yes.
Could I ask if the audience has any questions, just because they've sat through this and?
Absolutely. No objections from the board. I'm okay with that.
I mean, I don't wanna take a lot of your time, but if I brought something up that.
What's the maximum size building? You're talking about warehouses. What's the rule and offer for the maximum size of building?
I don't know. We'd have to go to the planning board.
Forty-five thousand feet.
Square feet?
It's not much of a warehouse.
Square feet?
A square feet. Now, I don't know if that's the foundation or if that's second and third story equals thirty-five thousand. Not much of a warehouse. Anyway.
You sell little stuff, it is.
That could be a constraint there. I mean, yeah, let's face it. Yeah. And, you know, if that turns out that that's the case, well, then maybe we have to change some of our requirements and say, maybe for this area, we're gonna allow more. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I think to, to that point, I think we're gonna learn a lot about how we do this. And, you know, we, we may learn some things that just say, mm, if you don't. Or we may learn some things to say, hey, if we change this, you know, maybe not right away, but in a couple of years, we get more interested parties. But, you know, people like yourself bringing stuff up like this, gives us a heads up. So, other?
I think it's a good one.
I think it would be pretty good, but, you know, we have to pull it off, too, you know, so.
Don't say we're not, you're saying we will.
Uh. I don't wanna make any promises that I can't keep.
I know the Economic Development Committee has been working on this stuff for several months. This is the first time I've actually seen all of the information in one place. And I think it's wonderful. I think you guys have done a really great job pulling this all together.
Well, uh, well, thank you. And the other thing is, is it will be, Joe has most of it on the website. I don't know if he has the latest version on the website, but I know the map is on the website and at least a couple of these flyers. I think because we were still consulting with the lawyers, I don't know if the plan.
That's the one, yeah. I hadn't seen that.
Is actually on there. It is on? Okay, so now it's all on. A couple of weeks ago it wasn't, because we didn't wanna put it on before we talked to the lawyers. Lawyer, sorry. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, especially for all the time. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it's fine. All right, moving on. Our next thing is approval of school board minutes. I believe we have minutes of December 10th.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 10th.
One edit. I was not there for that.
Second.
Thank you. Eight-minute meeting.
Yep, good. I second. Are, are you looking for an edit?
Just to remove my name. Sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you added something else. Is there any other comments or discussion on this, on this? All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Motion to approve the minutes of December 15th. Second.
Any discussion on that?
Line 263.
Yep.
Okay, you want?
Page nine. Chairman McGuigan said there should be no school on the Friday of the Deerfield there. Not that there is.
Right.
I thought he, I thought you said that there should be no school or it should be a half a day or early dismissal day.
I, I mentioned that as well, but, yeah.
Yeah.
The intent was that we want to avoid that day as much as possible.
So it just be, should be? No.
It's, depends on the year.
It was up for discussion because the Calendar Committee was getting ready to meet, and that was his recommendation for me to take to the Calendar Committee. So, yeah, that was the recommendation.
Correct.
That was it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Oh, wait a second, sorry. 297, page 10. Just on, take the word cord out of there. It was just on the Jungle Book. I don't know what the cord is.
Also? Hey. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries? Includes our minute, approval of minutes. We'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent's report.
The report's on page 11. I'll just give you a couple of highlights. State performance plan for special education. The school district scored 100% in compliance with respect to timeliness of initial evaluations. On your parent involvement survey last year, you scored 31% above the standard established by the state. And as you can see below that, I've been to court a couple of times, resulting in some changes in your census. And then our executive function parent night with Peg Dawson that was scheduled last month that was interrupted by weather is rescheduled for next Monday from 6:30 to 8:00. Any questions?
Are you getting much interest in that meeting? You know?
Certainly advertised it enough.
Yeah.
Unclear, huh? I'll be with Ms. Gunter at the Northwood. Budget and Dr. Gudowski will go to the executive function, Don Nottingham.
Oh, that's right, it's on the night. I'll be with them.
Yeah, you'll be with me, too.
Any questions for the Assistant Superintendent? We'll move on to the Principal's report then.
Good evening and Happy New Year. So in addition to the facilities update in my written report, I just wanted to let you know, you may have noticed on your way in that our railing at the front of the school is no longer upright. There was a little vehicle issue, the day after Christmas, too, vehicle issue, actually. So that is in the works. The police are aware of it. The town is aware of it. And Tom is in the process of getting some people in to look at it and get it repaired. One other facilities thing is that we do have a leak in the roof that, as it happens, is leaking into my office. All is well, though. Ceiling is not yet caved in, so that will be looked at next week as well. And it should be covered under warranty.
This was supposed to be taken care of, what, three years ago? How long ago was it, Tim, that the, this was supposed to be taken care of, three years ago?
Yeah, this was taken care of real well. Okay. Uh, one thing that I did not put in here, but that is good news, is as of this Tuesday, we are fully staffed in terms of students who worked, or staff who work directly with students. We are still looking for a full-time custodian and a part-time custodian. But other than that, we are fully staffed. What else? The, I'll save the fundraising for last. In terms of assessment, we, I guess historically, have been administering N W E A, the Northwest Education Association test, which tests reading, math, and language usage in the fall and in the spring. And the building leadership team discussed that and has decided to move the second administration of that test to the winter for a couple of reasons. One, the spring is really loaded with testing, particularly for students in grades four and eight. Also, spring testing is nice to have, because it shows you a year's worth of data, but it's not actionable data at that point, because the school year is almost over. And then you get new data in the fall. So this is an opportunity to get some data on how students are progressing while we still have time to do something about it. It also gives us the advantage of being able to, to plan summer programming with a little bit more time for students. And then certainly for some students, we would wanna do spring testing. And teachers will have the option of doing it for their whole class or for a particular subject area if they want, but it, the mandatory administration will move to the winter. So we are in the process of getting that scheduled, and it will start next week. Or the week, I'm sorry, the week after next.
Does the new testing overlap with the smarter balanced testing in the subjects?
In terms of subjects, yes. In terms of time, no, but they're right up against each other. And then Mr. Robert provided some information in terms of what's going on technology-wise. We have done some smarter balanced data analysis, and then there are some interim tests for smarter balance that are sort of narrower standards or topics. So we're going to encourage teachers to use those, both to just get kids familiar with the format of the test and also to target specific areas based on last year's data. So if we see that comprehension of informational text, for example, was weak in a certain grade level last year, then that might be an interim test that we administer now so that we can assess how kids are currently doing, since that data's going on eight months old. And then the last item on here is a fourth grade student and his parent are interested in doing some fundraising for Cornerstone, a project of Cornerstone called the Kitty Cornerstone Fund. And that provides toys for kids who are, toys and supplies for kids who are undergoing medical treatment, also supports moms of, you know, new moms. And the parent brought this to me primarily because her son was interested in it, and her son had already started doing some informal grassroots campaigning to get his kid, his classmates to donate either the toys or money. And so she and her son came in and met with me, and as I provided, she wrote a letter and so did he. And I think this is a really nice opportunity for, for the school, you know, a school-wide fundraiser that contributes to a good cause. So we are looking for board approval of that. And I think that's all I've got.
Motion to approve.
What, what exactly are the, all of these, both in her letter and in his letter, or?
Um, I think it's. So she left it a little open-ended in terms of the specific activities. And, you know, you can approve these examples or, you know, as she and her son identify specific activities, they can bring it back to you and you can approve those specific things. I think she was just looking for sort of initial board perception of whether or not we would move forward with this.
Are you supportive of these particular choices?
Yes, these were things that she and I discussed.
Well, I was just wondering, can we just approve the fundraiser and allow Jocelyn to, is it allowed to allow Jocelyn to say, okay, as long as it's not gonna interfere with any of the other ones going on for whatever else?
That's a typical concern, just to make sure it doesn't interfere with other things, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do, is just approve it and then just, you can just make sure it doesn't, you know, interfere with anything else at that point in time.
I'll move as such.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Same. 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 One abstention. Anything else concerning?
Will you come to school in your PJs, Jocelyn?
I mean, I'd rather not, you know?
That's a cute one. I've never seen that.
I think you should be really supportive.
A dollar.
Thank you, Adrian. I will consider it. How about that?
I just gave away my ones that look like the Minion. You could've wore those.
Well, where'd you get them? Maybe I can find more.
I got them as a gift.
There are the questions from Ms. Young that are not harassing. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have one, two, three, four policies to approve. This is the second reading of these. We went over them briefly at the last meeting. I don't believe there's any comments, so correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, it's me, but nothing has changed in the last readings.
Correct.
So I think a motion to approve them all or in part would be in order now.
Motion to approve IM, uh, policy I M D A, J C, oops, sorry. J C A, J I C D D, and J J J.
I'll second that. Any discussion on any of these policies? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? One abstention? Right, policies have been adopted. Superintendent's report, your own, that as well.
Personnel reports on page 24 and 25.
So stipend, um, like the first entry on there, we will leave till after a non-public session at the end. No lines up. The following three are stipends, which are informational only for us. We don't typically approve these, so I don't think we have anything to do right now with that. Yeah, I don't know why it's under the impact, under the superintendent's report. Do you have any, you have any information on that?
I don't have any, I mean, I have information, but it's from another district. Tim, you wanted to have an impact fee discussion. Somehow it ended up under the Superintendent's report.
Discussion.
No. I did do a little bit of just reading the laws on that. Not being a lawyer, I'm not sure I'm getting through it all correctly, but we need to have a capital improvement plan for that. It looks like it's because the money has to be spent on capital improvements.
I think the town has to have it, doesn't it, or is it the school?
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but the fact is, it's not money, unless, I could totally be wrong, but in my first reading of this. in my first reading of this, that it looks like it's not money that can just come in and go to your general fund. It's money that has to be, it's kind of set aside and needs to be used on capital improvements, like, you know, sewers or roads or buildings, safety complexes, you know, things like that. Okay, but that's what I saw on there, but like I said, I did not read it thoroughly through, so I could be wrong. I will, I didn't have much time to go through it, so I'm not sure.
Having, talking about impact fees is not something that, you know, it's going to take two minutes or something, but that's something that would take a long discussion.
I think we need to have, you said before, we need to have it with, like, the selectman or with, because it needs to be as part of the town decision.
There are rules about having impact fees, and one of the rules is you have to have a master plan, and we do have one, it's just 15 years old, and you do have to have a capital improvement plan, and we do have that, but it's relatively old. And frankly, the school didn't participate very well in it, which was unfortunate. But there's a whole lot of involved. The reason I bring it up is for two reasons. I know for a fact that a neighboring town has one, and they have $200 and some thousand dollars that has come in for the school to spend on impact things, things that impact the school. That's a fair substantial amount of money, at least in my book it is. Second off, and I forgot what the second one, there were two reasons, I'll have to think about that in a minute, but the issue is, oh, I know what the other issue is, and that is continually we have the problem of people assumably moving into Northwood just to go to school at Co-Brown. That is a big impact, it certainly is an impact on our budget. And how that all ties in is something that I think we would have to look into. I know there's a lot to it, but if Nottingham can do it, I fail to see why Northwood couldn't also do it. And these people that move into town, it's just charging them an amount of money that's set when they build a house. So, you know, because they are going to impact our town.
Is it just a house, or like, say, they build a, which we call it a warehouse, like, down in this area, can we get?
I think it's probably most of the building going on, but I'll be honest with you, I don't know the answer. It's a good question. I just feel it was something that we should look into.
So, would the best thing to do is probably after all of the budget stuff is done, say, in April or May or something, set up a meeting with?
What happened? Sorry.
Set up a meeting with the selectman and, or with Joe and, like a non-meeting or something like that?
I mean, we periodically do have meetings with the selectmen, and that's something that could be discussed in meantime.
Joe raised his hand. Do you have something to say?
When you're ready.
Joe's more interested in his TIF right now.
Well, I think that they would go, like, sort of go hand in hand, though, like, to me, but again, I'm not, none of this is like, I don't get a grasp on any of this, I'll be the first to admit that.
So, for reference, what I was reading is the RSA 674-21. So, take a look at that, too, if you want to see some, I don't know if that's all of the impact fee stuff, there might be other stuff elsewhere that I didn't find, but.
And everybody looks at things differently, but the people that I would want to talk to is whoever started and pushed it and got it in Nottingham. That's who I would like to have a discussion with and say, you know.
I mean, it doesn't have any impact on anybody in town, like, I'm assuming it would probably have to be something that'd be like a Warren article or something, or?
Any of us who own property in town, it would not impact us.
Right, it's just anybody that comes in.
The people who, and let's just say, when all of a sudden, things seem to move around the different towns around us, and one town's doing well, then another one, and then another one. And let's just say, all of a sudden, we sold a whole bunch of chunks of property because right now our property is cheaper in Northwood than it is in Nottingham for the same amount, basically the same lot size, et cetera. So, let's say people did move in, and all of a sudden you had a 16-house development move into town, or several of them, like Nottingham has had. We obviously in this town have land available, we really do. If you look at the tax maps, look at the one that was just given to you, there are, is a lot of property in our town that could be developed. Well, if that happens, that is going to impact us.
Right.
And that's where it comes from, impact fees. And it's certainly impacting us now in the cost of Co-Brown. And this was, you know, and I'm not sure that it could be used for Co-Brown, but those are things we'd have to look at, you know, and get far more answers than I have.
Right.
I know the two things. Co-Brown is a problem because people move into town and they cost a lot of money, and Nottingham has it, they managed to do it, and frankly, if Nottingham can do it, I just don't see why Northwood couldn't.
Do you want to hear from our administrator?
Not to spend too much time on this, but this is the kind of stuff I love, this growth and population movement and stuff. We are expected to see some good growth in Northwood over the next 10 years. Personally, I would expect 45,000 to 5,000 people coming in in the next decade. Town administrator's opinion, we'll see what happens. To Tim's point, this has been on our tickler file for, since I've been here, and we are working towards that. We're updating the master plan, which is slow-going, but these impact fees are definitely something that we haven't forgot about. One more thing, yes, a lot of land, a brief story since I now have the floor. I interviewed in Colorado, and like here, Colorado had a lot of empty space. What these developers did, they went and bought these huge 300-track pieces of land, 100-acre pieces of land, and just dropped down these terrible developments. And that's what this TIF is about, and this is what the impact fee is about, and what's about, what this whole development thing is about. Let's not do this stupidly, let's develop in a way that doesn't destroy the town, and impact fees are definitely part of it.
Thanks a lot.
So, why don't?
So, yeah, I guess that's the thing, is like, should we say, like, the first meeting in April, like, set a time to discuss this, or like, try to set a time with Joe and with the selectman, or whoever it is to get more information on what it is?
Why don't we?
Or to, do we need to?
I'll put it on the parking lot now, so we don't forget to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it passes the warrant, then we can have a.
Yeah, the TIF passes.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, so maybe, so the election.
And then if we need to, like, form a committee or whatever.
Well, we put it on the parking lot items for April, early April.
Yeah.
And then we can bring it back up and then start working towards that. Can you, Scott, can you get that on our?
It's already here.
Parking lot, thank you. Okay, well, that was a great superintendent's report, Mr. Rutter. Does anyone else have any questions for?
I mean, if the board, if the board wishes, I'll start gathering the information that you need out of Nottingham. There's some public documents, there's some legal opinions that aren't public that we maybe could persuade the board to make public.
That would be awesome.
Do you?
That would be great.
I mean, there's lots of information, some of it I can't share because they're legal opinions.
Right.
I do believe their planning board is the ones that do approve the disbursement of the impact fees. A portion goes to their fire and safety, and a portion is reserved for the school. And you're right, it is around $206,000 right now.
And it's not necessarily capital, it goes in the general fund?
I can tell you that the interpretation that I've heard and seen is that it has to be used for growth. Nottingham's in an interesting situation, their building is bursting at its seams right now, so they may be able to use those impact fees, although it took lots of legal opinions and updating the CIP plan and updating of the analysis of the impact fees, and there was some cost there. But we believe, or they, well, I mean, the Nottingham board believes, and I correctly, that if they have to, you know, for example, get a modular classroom to expand, that they would definitely be able to use those fees for that. I'm not totally sure about tuition at Co-Brown, although it's a really interesting thought, but we certainly can try to gather some public documents and maybe talk to the board about releasing some opinions from the attorneys in an effort to help you with that.
That'd be awesome.
All right?
Thank you. We can help out with the.
It's considered growth.
Nottingham School Board members, we can do that, too.
I guess it's all how you put it into your capital improvement plan.
Well, there are some restrictions, it can be dicey.
Because it is growth.
There is some, for example, before the meeting, a member of the public was talking about an experience in another town, those experiences do happen, so you just have to be very thoughtful when you plan it out and what you're going to use it for.
Thank you, Scott. We will move on to our new business, of which we just have the calendar approval, so I assume the calendar committee met.
This calendar is my report.
Yes, okay.
The only things of note that changed from last year were we moved a teacher workshop from October to September, and we okayed a, an early release on the Friday of the Deerfield Fair. Not a day.
Not a whole day.
Yeah, not a whole day, but a half-day. So, that was it.
Better than nothing. Do we have any comments on this? Do we have, like, those built-in snow days as well, in April?
Mm-hmm.
Just look at the two of them.
I don't have a comment, I just, well, maybe I do have a comment. It doesn't matter to me the day before or the day that the fairs start, but I think if you go back and look, and I wish you would before you approve this, that an early release day, mostly kids don't come to school. And why should we count it as a school day, then? It seems to me that it should be a day off. I.
The committee discussed this, because some people were very clear on the fact that the numbers of students that actually leave early or take the day off on the day, the Friday before the Deerfield Fair is actually much smaller than a lot of people think. So, they thought by compromising and making it just an early release was kind of the way to go.
Well, I think we have documents that can show, I don't know what it is, but I do think that there are records that we have that would show, and I would be curious to see that on an early release day, so many kids come to school, and on a day that it's off, or when it was a full day, so many kids to school, and just to have that to judge by. I just know that it's a real hassle getting kids to come to school that day, and maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I've been told over and over. I'm not in the school, but, you know, I've been told over and over, boy, that it's just, the classes are empty. And I don't have a problem with some early release days, but I want to educate our students.
So, what was the justification for making that early release day instead of a day off? Do you remember what the discussion was?
Um, like I said, I think it was because the number of students that don't come on that Friday, it was not as high as people thought, but they wanted to be fair and kind of compromise with what the board asked for, so they went with the half-day.
I assume the June 11th release date is with just the assumption that we'll have the snow days. I just think going that Monday, June 11th, you know, you're going that one Monday, and if we have no snow days, you're going to bring it back on that Monday.
Yeah, so, well, that's when we ended on Monday.
As I said, nothing has changed. The exact same as last year, except for those two things.
And if February vacation falls right on, same as Co-Brown's, assuming, right?
I'm not sure, actually.
Because I know that's a big.
That looks about the right, yeah, that's what it is this year.
That's one, because the kids would pull around in here, and it's on different weeks.
It goes into the first week of March this year for February, and I think it's the same.
I have a few edits that I would suggest.
Sure.
So, up at the top where it says official adopted by the board, I would change that to officially.
It says draft two, I saw that, too. I was like, draft two, did we ever see draft one?
And then down at the bottom where it says total instructional day is 180 days required by state statute, I think that should stay statute.
Statue up front, you didn't see that?
See if anybody catches it.
And then in the snow day section in the bottom right corner, it should say March 3rd, 2018. And then, I was an English major, I'm really sorry, but it should read if there are fewer than seven cancellations. And that is all I have.
I hate that rule. Does the board have any other recommendations for this? I assume we will meet again to finalize it, then, or is this considered?
I think it can be considered finalized with.
With these changes?
Jocelyn's edits, I think that's fine.
Does the board want to vote on it now, then, or think about it and come back and vote? Next meeting. There's no rush on it, I think, right?
I'm not voting on it.
We didn't change anything.
Let's put it on the agenda for, let's put it on the agenda for next meeting, and that way we can, it can be on the agenda, we can put this out there, members of the public could come talk to us, and, you know.
Hey, could we get the stats of that Friday?
Well, we didn't have school that Friday this year, so last year.
Last year, but then, we did the year before, we had full day of school.
And that was weird, because they set up, I remember talking to the former president, I forget her name, Wendy, excuse me, sorry, and they actually set up a phone line where it, they wouldn't even answer at the front office. So, I don't know how many people were actually calling in that when they wouldn't answer, and it would go right to, hey, if you're dismissing your kid from school, and leave a voicemail. So, it was to that point, so I don't know how many actually voicemails they got, but that's where they set up.
A full day sounded like a disaster, like, must I, must I hurt?
I don't think the Deerfield Fair is going anywhere, I really don't, and I don't know why we can't, almost, I hate policies right now, but I, you know, make a policy and stick with it, because we have gone, since I've been on the board.
You've gone, yeah, back and forth.
We've gone back and forth between the three, half-day, no-day, full-day, and it's confusing to the parents and, you know, and their planning and stuff like that. I personally, I'm in favor of no-day. I'm personally in favor of no-day, I'll tell you that flat out.
I think the committee was kind of leaning in that direction, that they wanted to be compromising.
I am personally in the favor of no-day.
What I would like to see, too, is also a more of a school involvement with the fair, where it's, you know, they have the 4-H there, but have more.
The school building, too.
Well, we used to, big time.
And have a more of a showing with that, then that's why there was a full day off, because there was a lot of students that were involved, they wanted to be there, when, so, I mean, now that it's kind of fallen away from that, it's like, okay, well, they're just going there because it's a day off, you know, so I think we should really push more of a school involvement. And then, okay, let's have the day off because there are kids involved with the Deerfield Fair and the FFA program.
I will dig up that attendance data.
Okay, so be prepared for next meeting, we'll.
It was off this year as a teacher workshop, and if we're looking at having the school more involved with it, I don't think that's the way to do it.
If it's a teacher workshop.
Right.
Yeah.
If it's a teacher workshop, yeah.
I would like to see more involvement.
It was a teacher workshop last year.
This year, this, yes.
Yes, this year.
This current year.
This current year's already passed, right?
This current school year.
Yeah, that seemed like a good compromise to me as well, but.
But if you're asking for the school involvement, the teachers are here, the students are there, you're not getting the involvement together. That's what I'm saying.
True. All right, move on for now, we'll discuss it next meeting. Committee reports, we have an athletic report, athletics report. Ms. Young, is that something you were going to do, or was it if something came up?
Was that something I was supposed to do in February?
I'm on the committee, and we have, we have not met.
Okay.
I think it was on your timeline?
Yeah, it was on our timeline.
So, you had me put it on the agenda?
Right, well, we didn't have to, but I think we put it on there as a placeholder in case there was something.
Yeah, if there isn't, there isn't, that's fine.
Yeah, discussion of athletic program coaching with board is on our calendar. Yeah, why don't you guys, if the athletic committee can figure out what needs to be done around this time, if anything, and if nothing, we'll just take it off our, we'll take it off our calendar.
I don't think anything really needs to be done, I mean, we got coaching vacancies coming up for baseball and softball and track, but I'm pretty sure that's the only thing we really need to work on, coming up.
Unless we want to talk about, like, changing programs or something like that, but.
Yeah, but we'll meet, and we'll get back in.
Yeah, if you have any recommendations, I guess. Or parking lot. After your ceiling, don't suspect, suspect the facilities committee met to talk about that?
No.
Did I skip that other committee report? I'm sorry, before we get onto that, was there any other committees that met?
Scott and I met, but we'll bring those to the next meeting.
More more?
Something like that, and then I think, so what we were working on were the updates, and then the policies that were missing, the Bear Christina analyzed, so once we're done with that, we may bring the rest of the book to you for adoption, did he do? And then we'll be on the spring and fall updates, which will be semi-relaxing.
Sure. Great. Any other committees meet? I think probably not over Christmas, I'm guessing, there's probably not much going on, right? I'm not aware of any either. Okay, CIP plan, we. Okay, CIP plan, we referred to the facility committee, they did not meet. Revisit strategic planning.
I think we're going to do that the next one, weren't we?
Yeah, so I talked to Dr. Godomski today, because originally we'd had that on for this meeting?
Yep.
And he moved it to the next meeting, because he wanted to have the January expense report, so you could figure out if you had money to spend on strategic planning. So it's already on the agenda for next time.
Sounds good. Future meetings coming up, we have, I know there's a budget meeting, meeting work session on January ninth.
Right, seven.
Seven.
That was just to discuss the?
I think it's just that one warrant article.
Or, and any new ones?
Yeah, they'd like to know.
Oh, like conditions and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And there, there aren't any as of today, and they have to the tenth to file them. So we're bringing two things Monday night, the cost of the warrant and the NESTA.
On January twelfth, I believe it's a Thursday, we have the school board, I mean, the budget public hearing at town hall. If everybody can make that, that'd be great. Our next regular board meeting is on January nineteenth, following that, January, February second. On January twenty-third, we have a joint board meeting at the S U R, set six-fifteen. I skipped over, I'm sorry, I skipped over set future agenda items. Does anybody like to bring up stuff with future agendas? Right now, we have.
Calendar.
At least the calendar on there, and strategic planning, along with all of our usuals, any subjects anybody want added. Okay, if something comes up, please let me know, we can add it up to seven days before. Email's fine, or whatever, and we can put it on the agenda. Moving on, closing public comment.
Sharon Lord, Tenmore Cam Road, and teacher here, wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but Barbie, thank you for bringing up the letter from December seventh. So, Tim, week after week, you bash the teachers that work at this school, and every week, I go to work hoping that your negative rhetoric doesn't discourage families from moving here and doesn't discourage new and qualified teachers from working in this town. However, I feel this letter crossed the line. As one of the teachers on the negotiation team, I felt that we negotiated a good contract, and I took you at your word that you would support our contract in town. You were always claiming to provide the truth to town, so let's talk about the truth. The budget and our contract are two separate items. I was even told so when I asked at our meetings if it could all be in the budget. So you can support one and not the other. How about, instead of reporting how overpaid we are as teachers, that you share how much money was saved by us waiving four and five years of steps, so that you originally wanted to catch us up on? How about reporting to the town that during negotiations, you agreed to our contact, our contract, and that you did agree to support us in town? I gave my word to the teachers at this school that I negotiated our contract in good faith, and I took you at your word. What I didn't realize was that your word fluctuates with how it suits your personal agenda.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak?
Beth Boudreaux, Main Street. I had a question regarding the half-day for the Deerfield Fair. Is there a certain percentage of children that have to attend school to have that day count? I know in the past, we've had it off for the past, I think, three years, but before that, we used to have like two whole pages of absentee kids, so.
It's a state regulation, I don't know what it is.
I know we've been very close, before, it was like, oh, if one or two more kids get dismissed or they leave, it doesn't count.
I read it a while ago, but I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
We can, we can have, we can have a brought back for our next meeting, too.
Because regardless, the information you're going to get will be several, so really, you can't, you know?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's. It's somewhere between forty and sixty, but I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, if you could, if you could just make a note to bring that, that next meeting as well, will be part of the discussion. Any other members of the public? Dave? No? Any board members wish to speak at this time? No?
No. I just, I re, and I apologize for being late, the whole hour, half-hour switch. Are we going to continue to do that? Is that the overall board's decision to?
Is it gonna, is it gonna be an issue for you?
I mean.
If it is, then I'd like to go back to the six-thirty.
So, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's put that.
I'm missing dinner, you know, I, I like to have dinner with my family, and coming this early, I can't have dinner with my family.
Yeah.
I could just, just managed it before, and I, I really like having dinner with my family.
Yeah. So I prefer the six-thirty.
So we can either, I don't know that we need to put this on agenda for an item next week, because it mostly affects us, I guess, but, you know, guys want to discuss that now and make some changes if necessary?
I'm okay discussing.
I'm, 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 I'm sorry, Bree, I'm for going back, I've got to go home and have dinner by myself now. I like having dinner with my family.
I make a motion to move it back to six-thirty.
Six-thirty, starting next, starting next.
Starting next, in two weeks, yeah.
Uh, any discussion on that, guys?
Do I get a second?
Yeah, Tim, second.
Oh, a second, sorry.
Bill's a manifest at six.
Yes.
Boy, it was.
Boy, it was, go back. Have you anything to say for that? You, you want to? No?
I don't like getting out of here at ten o'clock at night, so, no, I don't agree, but if I'm alone, then that's the board's vote.
Yeah, personally, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, six, six-thirty, doesn't matter. I don't want to stay here till ten either, but maybe we could just cut it back from the side, try to get out quick.
An hour fifteen minutes is good, but I think having the fifth board member here and having dinner with our families.
Yeah, okay. Vote?
Aye.
Aye.